You have one minute.
All right, so we are recording and live now. So you begin, Ms. Lambert, whenever you are ready, but just.
Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the Citroplating Board for Thursday of 27th, 2022. We help here with the site for hearing room. This is not my group meeting, so all roll calls, we have to take them by roll call. We have two members offsite waiting for this complaint to come. But it's six, there is, so we will start. The Citroplating Board is committed to providing an environment of respect for meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized interviews, to be allowed with respect. It will be asked our community members that all participating community be standing to support and respect our community. But as he said, we recognize the post-projetti who might have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Ms. Burbine?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Make unanimous all in favor.
The first of our January is continued public hearing of the site plan and the survey review of special permit for a multifamily building in a village center in April District, Green Bush Gateway District, Green Bush Gateway Business Subdister, VCN GGG GWB, and I would like to leave something first for you. The plating board has been meeting for a year on several driftways. And all engineering period of issues have been resolved, and site building issues have been resolved. The Gateway District will have a new and improved look. And are there any comments for the board, Frankenstein?
No.
And do you, I don't know, they're, are you?
No, and are there any comments for the public before we start? Okay, here we go. In the, you can leave off.
Yes, I was gonna.
No, we have to, Garrett?
Yeah, so she did, I think if there's no comments, then we just can.
So how is that do this because it's another fiduciary page thing, uh, you need to pay your benefits, you need to pay your salary, okay? Yeah, off we go.
Off we go. Okay, I move to make the following items of fact. One, on August 31st, 2021, the applicant Driftway LLC filed an application for a special permit, major site plan review, and stormwater permit for a residential multifamily project in the Village Center and April District under Citro Zone by law, section 580, 750, and 770. The application included, but is not limited to, the following. A, application forms including attachment A, your app, and stormwater permit for notice deed and municipal lease certificate of July 12, 2021. B, filing fees and a butters list. C, site plan development plans, proposed residential development, seven new driftway institute mass dated July 12, 2021, a McKenzie Engineering Group Inc. consisting of fourteen chiefs. D, architectural weathering and architectural plans for our residential complex, seven new driftway institute mass, first, second, third, and fourth, four plans and elevations by Philly Tivo Architect LLC dated October 15, 2020, with revision dated May 20, 2021, consisting of four chiefs. E, drainage calculations and stormwater management report for proposed residential development located at seven new driftway institute mass, O2O66, dated 12, July 12, 2021, by McKenzie Engineering Group. Two, the property that is the subject of the application is a 54,385 square foot or 1.25 acre parcel located off New Driftway, Citro, Massachusetts. The property is currently in proof for vacant middle medical office building onsite for tumors, concrete carving, and associated utilities. Three, the project is located in the new village center at Aprilwood, VCN, Zonin District, Green Bush Driftway, Gateway District, GUG. And the Gateway Business Subdistrict, GWB, VCN-GGG-GWB. This site is also in the Water Resources Protection District, Zone A and Zone H, Salt Marsh and.
You meant that Zone Two. That's a two.
That's, excuse me, Zone Two, Salt Marsh and Thailand Conservation District, and floodplain and watershed protection district. Four, the zoning bylaw in effect for this project is the bylaw approved by the Citro Animal Town Meeting on 4/12/2021, and the Attorney General on 9/13/2021, and posted to the website on October 2021. Five, the project proposed by the architect consists of nineteen residential units in one multifamily buildings, MFP. There are five one-bedroom units, fourteen two-bedroom units, a total of thirty-three bedrooms. The building is a three-story building with a habitable, fourth-floor attic. The building has a maximum building height of thirty-nine to eleven and a half inches from the average grade plate to the mean of a group slope, which is less than the maximum height of forty feet set forth in the zoning by law. A group home is proposed to be constructed offsite and will have five proposed bedrooms, each of which will count as an individual dwelling for purposes of the project and inclusion in the subsidized housing inventory, SHI. Six, there are eleven total exterior parking spaces provided. This includes one handicap parking space in the front door. There are sixteen low level garage parking spaces, including one handicap parking space. The project requires twenty-six parking spaces and twenty-seven will be provided. Parking is governed by section 760.8 in the Citro zoning by law for parking in mixed use districts, Table 2, and requires one space for a one-bedroom unit and one and a half spaces for two bedrooms in a multifamily building as the site is in the VCN District. Section 760.7 does not apply, is opposed for residential use in the VCN. Seven, proposed, the property at seven new driftway does not require a pedestrian passage over a zone for section 58.2 of zoning by law. Eight, in the VCN GGG GWB, a multifamily building is an allowed use for section 420 and 580.3 of the zoning bylaws and an allowed building height per section 750 of the zoning bylaw. Per section 420, the allowed use is by special permit. Nine, the base residential density in the VCN GGG GWB sub-district per section 580.4 of the zoning bylaw for multifamily building is twelve units per acre by right and twenty-four units per acre by special permit. Fourteen point nine six units are allowed by right, twenty-nine point nine six are allowed by special permit. Nineteen units are proposed onsite require a density bonus of four units. A special permit is required for nineteen units if certain public realm improvements are made by the applicant that will provide benefits to residents and businesses in the project, the VCN district, and surrounding area. The eligible public benefit improvements can include onsite or offsite infrastructure improvements, street skate improvements, open space improvement, amenities not otherwise required under section 7.2, public parking spaces, or additional affordable units beyond the number required for the development. The applicant proposes to provide a contribution of $70,000 to be used toward repair, maintenance, reconstruction, and associated engineering of the pier in Driftway Conservation Park, which needs repair and maintenance and is identified in the town's open space and recreation plan. The applicant shall provide such funds to the town prior to commencement of construction. The funds shall be placed in account and the expenditure for thereof shall be approved by the town administrator, town planner, planning board, and conservation commission, all of whom must concur.
Ten, section 580.4 also has minimum bulk standards for dwelling sizes. Two-bedroom unit is required to have nine hundred square feet of usable floor area. One-bedroom unit is required to have six hundred square feet of usable area. The one-bedroom units will have a usable area of eight hundred and six square feet or eight hundred and ten square feet. And the two-bedroom units will have a usable area of 1,147 square feet minimum. This requirement is met. Eleven, no public realm standards are required for this development as no new streets are being created. The project proposes to eliminate two existing curb cuts from the site and replace them with sidewalks and curving in public right-of-way. Pedestrian crosswalk is required by zoning and is provided. Twelve, a group home is being proposed offsite to meet the number of four-bedroom units required for the project. The group home will have five, five bedrooms, each of, well, I'm sorry, well, five bedrooms, each of which will count as an affordable unit for the project. The proposed group home will consist of one building with five bedrooms, each of which will count as an. That is, uh, yeah, just a sentence.
Yeah.
Or each of which will count as affordable unit for the project on the town's SHI. Construction of the five units meets the requirement for the project with a density bonus to have twenty percent of the units awarded. The project will have twenty-four total units, including the five affordable units, and therefore meets the twenty percent criteria. The applicant proposes to enter into a development agreement with CIL Realty of Massachusetts Incorporated, CIL, purchase the property at 165-167 Stockbridge Road, AHT Property, from the town of Citro, the Federal Housing Trust, AHT, and obtain the permits necessary to construct the five-bedroom group home thereon. The applicant shall donate the AHT property to CIL and then obtain an appraisal for the property. The applicant will donate the appraisal cost of the unimproved AHT property to CIL, which shall construct the five-bedroom group home at its expense. After construction, CIL shall lease the group home to Cardinal Cushing Centers Incorporated or other suitable party for a term of thirty years. The five affordable units shall be constructed so as to be included in the town's SHI. The group home shall be constructed and have occupancy permit prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit for the seven new driftway development. Thirteen, the applicant met with the designer review committee, DRC, on several occasions to discuss the project. The DRC recommended the planning board move ahead with the special permit process in a memorandum dated April 11, 2022. They indicated the design meets the criteria set forth in section 750 of the zoning bylaws, with the exception of the building setback slash height. Further bylaws, a building within twenty-five to fifty feet of the street shall be no more than thirty-five feet in height. The overall height of the proposed building is just below forty feet. The DRC felt that this was acceptable as the building's beam is at or below thirty-five feet, and the overall design meets the criteria set forth in the zoning bylaw. The design standards under section 580 and 750 of the zoning bylaw must be bent or waived. Fourteen, a multifamily building, MFP, includes lot standards and design standards found in section 750.6, including a minimum lot size not required, street frontage of eighty feet is required. There is six hundred and two feet of frontage on New Driftway. Lot depth is not required. The front yard built is on setback, is ten feet minimum and thirty feet maximum. Twenty-five point one feet for the minimum is proposed, and twenty-nine feet for the maximum is proposed. Minimum side yard is fifteen feet, 263.6 is provided. And our rear yard is twenty feet, 22.8 is provided. Outdoor amenity space coverage requires twenty percent of the lot. Twenty point nine percent is provided for the plants. No square footage has been provided. The permitted outdoor amenity spaces per section 752 of the bylaw is a common yard and garden, private open space with outdoor permeable paper patio of one. Building height will conform to the height regulation set forth for an MFP of thirty-nine feet, eleven and a half inches from the average grade plate to the average height between the eve and the rich running building and wood finish roof. The minimum street-facing wall width is sixty feet and the maximum is a hundred feet. Under section 750.5b 2d, vertical modulation and articulation, no street-facing building elevation will be wider than a hundred feet without a special permit. As one hundred feet is provided, no special permit is required. A street-facing entrance is required and provided, a maximum building footprint is not applicable.
Fifteen, an MFP has general site standards found in section 750.5 included. More than one principal building is allowed on a lot if the building line dimensional standards are met for each principal building individually. There is one building on the lot. The lot is a quarter lot and the front facade of the building is paralogic street running ley line. Multifamily buildings, probably twenty-five feet, shall be required to step back or step back on the street right of way. The building is step back twenty-nine feet for the front property line, but step back zero to twenty-five feet, a maximum height of twenty-five feet is required. The building is twenty-five feet to fifty feet of maximum height of thirty-five feet is allowed. According to the applicant, the eve is at a thirty-five feet height. Two angles on the court elevation got thirty-five feet, eleven and a half inches in height, which exceeds the height, but a step back of thirty-five feet. The DRC felt that this was acceptable as the building to ease course below the height and the overall design meets the criteria in the zoning bylaw. The scale of the building is visually compatible with the site and its layout. Building articulation standards have been that the buildings resident here could be in a risk design to be as serious of smaller buildings with varied articulation. No street-facing building elevation is more than what I agree. Horizontal modulation and articulation are required as the building is three stories in total. The block two stories are visually integrated and bases differentiated from above by a horizontal expression line and change in color. The central portions are visually integrated, differentiated from barb, the top, and the attic has a change in facade with the former skidoo roof. Street-facing building facade shall provide surface relief controls and jaw canopies, and jaw canopies are provided. Facade transparency is required for a multi-use building. Windows shall be evenly spaced along the facade. Windows shall be low reflectivity glass. The facade glazing shall fall between the height of two feet and twelve feet. Facade glazing requirements are only applicable to front facades facing a street right of way. The project meets the requirements of windows spacing, facade glazing occurring between the first floor and ninth floor features. Low reflectivity glass is proposed. The roof pitch is nine to twelve, meets the criteria of six to twelve verilow and twelve to twelve mass. Exterior treatments will be provided, exterior treatments will be synthetic materials intended to provide open carriage of traditional building materials, i.e. secret shades and clavicle. Here will be quarter boards, crown molding in the windows and other trim work. The roof will be architectural asphalt shingles and split color with some that will be sanding these FBA's entries. Dutters and gallons spots will be present. The windows will be archable. Architectural elements are continued from the front side of the building, and the proposed building has textures that match. Sixty, development site standards include section 758.8. The development site consists of one building. The development site does not include any existing or proposed right-of-way. A multifamily building is current building type in this district. A minimum of fifty feet of parkage on a publicly accessible street providing access to the development is provided. Development blocks standards are not for the both. Site maintenance is provided. Plating is our ratio, not your square division of traffic. Parking must be located a minimum of five feet behind the front facade. The project does not meet this requirement and the labor is deep sought for this required. Here is one handicap parking space in the front setback, and the tribal lane for the parking to the east of the building is in the front setback. A street screen shall be required where parking is visible from public sphere of sidewalk. A landscape shrub screen is provided to screen parking from the street along a five-foot tall decorative fence. A driveway service either side is shown off of New Driftway, and is proposed as twenty-four feet wide. New public utilities are proposed as underground. Trash, trash storage areas outside are proposed with their dumps to a fenced enclosure. The garage is located on the east side of the building and people have no doors and does not breach the street. Bicycle racks have been providing an array of tent-to-step auto spaces and four bicycle stability accommodations.
Seventeen, sustainable site design is required in the VCN district per section 751 of the zoning bylaw. Stormwater management shall conform to the best management practices as described in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Stormwater Management Handbook. Predevelopment hydrology is maintained by reduction of pavement, infiltrating some stormwater and using impervious pavement. The post-construction peak rate of volume runoff is not, is not exceeded for the one, two, ten, twenty-five, and one-hundred-year, twenty-four-hour rain events. Stormwater best management practices are required. Treatment streams of deep sump, hooded catch basins, subsurface infiltration, and a rain garden are provided. Minimization of impervious surfaces is partially provided by, providing only the required parking and reducing the amount of impervious surface on the site. A rain garden has been provided, and the level spreaders will help diffuse roof runoff. As this is a redevelopment project, and there is improvement of the best management practices in the Zone A, the board has outlined that recharge is accepted. Eighteen, total impervious area of the site is sixteen thousand one hundred and ninety square feet, which is a reduction of twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-two square feet from the existing conditions of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-two square feet. There is twenty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-one square feet of impervious area existing in the Zone A, and fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty-seven square feet proposed. There is a twenty-one, excuse me, there is twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-two square feet of impervious area existing in overlapping Zone As and Zone Twos, and fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty-seven square feet proposed. This is more than twenty percent of the lot, and some artificial recharge is provided by a reduction of impervious area and through some infiltration from the level spreaders. This exceeds the requirements of the zoning bylaw for the Water Resources Protection District. No certification has been provided that the artificial recharge of precipitation will not degrade the groundwater quality for the Zone Two and overlapping Zone A slash Zone Two areas. The proposed area of disturbance for regrading is approximately thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventeen square feet. Greater than ninety percent TSS removal has been provided. As this is a redevelopment project, the rooftop runoff must be treated to the maximum extent practically. Two level spreaders provide some treatment of roof runoff. A level spreader also disperses flow from the rain garden area. Both level spreaders provide some recharge and help protect the existing bank from erosion as well as improving conditions from the existing condition by reducing impervious area promoting recharge. The board of classes of Water Resources Protection District requirements have been met to the extent practical for this site. Nineteen, a landscaping plan shall be required for all submissions except where awaited by the planning board. To the greatest extent possible, native plans shall be maintained and no plans listed as invasive or prohibited by Massachusetts shall be used. Existing invasive plants shall be removed. A landscape plan has been provided. Native landscaping is reasonably proposed, lawn area and the front yard is minimized, and fertilizer use is discouraged. This requirement has been met. Twenty, multifamily residential development shall provide access for parking lots to a public sidewalk, and the primary building as indicated in section 760.8.1F.2 public waste. This is provided by a walkway connection from the main walk into the building to the existing sidewalk in the right of way of New Driftway. Twenty-one, seven section sixty parking. Waivers requested per section 750.8.1d.1 to have parking in the front yard. One handicap space is proposed in the front yard, and part of the travel way for these parking is in the front setback. The handicap space is for residential use, for residential units and meets the site requirements. The handicap parking space serves the public, public development and causes no substantial adverse effects.
Twenty-two, a traffic study was prepared by Gillian and Associates to the site. Venice and Associates, Inc., VAI, reviewed the study and provided comments which the applicant addressed for submission of additional materials. VAI has found the requirements have been addressed with the conditions provided. Twenty-three, Citro Zone by law, section 770.6, sets forth a standard review approval of proposed site plans which are required for proposed developments, which are of a size that may have significant impact on anyone's. Multifamily buildings require site plan review of train board. Section seven, uh, twenty-four, section 770.6A, site plan approval standard A, protection of adjoining premises against detrimental and offensive methods of utilizing the site. Finding, the site is currently a vacant deteriorated medical office building, and a multifamily building is allowed by special permit. Our redevelopment will clean up, will clean the site up. This standard is met. Twenty-five, section 770.6B, site plan approval standard B. The traffic safety and ease of access at street and highway entrances and exits of driveways, taking account of traffic volume, raise site distances and distances between each such driveway, entrances, exits, and the nearest existing street or highway intersections and times of peak traffic flow. Finding, the site is located on New Driftway. The project will consist of a multifamily building with nineteen units. The proposed development will have its own separate off-street parking, meeting the requirements of section 750.8. Access with the parking will be off New Driftway. The applicant maintains there is capacity on New Driftway to handle the traffic that will be generated by changing the development from a medical office building to a multifamily building. The applicant maintains there is adequate site distance. Any backup we decide will be onsite, raise our minimal. There is a driveway across the street to an office, medical office facility. This standard is met. Twenty-six, section 770.6C, site plan approval standard C. Safety and adequacy of driveway layout, pedestrian safety, off-street parking, loading sites, minimizing glare from headlights, and light intrusion. Sufficiency of access for service vehicles such as electricity, gas, fuel, telephone, laundry, rubbish removal, water, sewer, fire, police ambulance, or other routine of emergency vehicles. Finding, the proposed development will have its own separate off-street parking meeting and requirements of section 750.8. Access will be from, from New Driftway. The access of New Driftway is twenty-four feet wide. There is a walkway to reach the sidewalk of New Driftway. The applicant indicates the site will have sufficient access for service and emergency vehicles. This standard is met. Twenty-seven, section 770.6D, site plan approval standard D. Acreacy of the methods of disposal of sewage, refuse, and other waste resulting from the uses committed on the site, safety and adequacy of water supply and distribution, and apply to fight facilities onsite. Finding, the project proposes to connect to existing sewer servers in New Driftway and connect to water main located in New Driftway. They recommend individually metered units. The buildings will have fire surface. There will be a new fire hydrant installed on the driveway. There is a dumpster for crash. This standard is met. Twenty-eight, section 770.6.1E, site plan approval section E. Acreacy of surface and stormwater drainage and snow mountain runoff within and from site, including and but not limited to all walkways, driveways, buildings, parking and loading areas. Finding, the proposed project consists of a subsurface recharge system and a bio-retention area for the proposed building and driveways. The site is located within the Water Resources Protection District and has been designed to comply with compliance. Snow, snow storage areas are not provided. The board engaged Chessy Consulting Services to evaluate the adequacy and accuracy of McKenzie Engineering Group's stormwater report and data as well as the efficacy and adequacy of the design. Chessy Consulting Services submitted detailed written comments to the plating board. In response to these comments, the applicant and McKenzie provided responses regarding reports where requested and updated site plans. After further review by Chessy Consulting Services, the applicant was determined to have adequately addressed the comments and recommendations that the stormwater management system is built as designed. The applicant has submitted a stormwater management plan and operation and maintenance plan that ensures that the project will be managed appropriately before and after the completion of construction. The applicant has submitted an erosion and sediment control plan and that has been reviewed by the board's peer review consultants. The review of the stormwater management system by the planning board's consulting engineer and the approval of the site plan review and special. and the approval of the site plan review and special permit eliminates the requirement for a separate stormwater permit under the Stormwater General Bylaw and its regulations for any work that conforms to the plan. Bradley C. Mackenzie P.E. has certified that the drainage system will result in post-development runoff characteristics including peak flow, total volume of runoff and water quality runoff to be equal or less than pre-development runoff characteristics. This standard is met.
Twenty-nine. Section seven seventy point six F, Site Plan Approval Standard F. Adequacy of provisions made to protect against toxic or hazardous materials or oil, discharge or loss resulting from corrosion, accidental damage, spillage or vandalism through measures such as spill control provisions in the vicinity of fuel delivery points, secured storage areas for toxic or hazardous substances, materials or oil and indoor storage provisions for corroable or dissolvable materials. Finding, the project has been designed to comply with the requirements of the Water Resource Protection District. The standard is met. Thirty. Section seven seventy point six G, Site Plan Approval Standard G. Minimizing the volume of cotton filled, the number of trees of six inches caliber are greater removed, the length of stone walls removed, soil erosion and destruction of other natural features. Finding, the proposed site is creating, the proposed twenty-nine thousand square feet and minor grade changes are proposed. Therefore, there's minimal cotton filled. Some trees in the suburbs or in the building are proposed to be removed. The standard is met. Thirty-one. Section seven seventy point six H, Site Plan Approval Standard H. Minimize obstruction of seating views from publicly accessible locations. Finding, the site does not consist of any seating views from publicly accessible locations and therefore the applicant complies with this requirement. Thirty-two. Section seven seventy point six I, Site Plan Approval Standard I. Parking areas shall be adequately buffered and shaded using native vegetation. Parking lots with ten or more spaces shall be planted with at least twenty shade trees or ten spaces of a caliber of at least two and a half inches DBH, which with each tree providing shade to the parking area. Parking areas continually. Rating elements such as dumpsters and loading docks shall be designed to minimize visual intrusion from public ways in the residentially owned or self-areas. In addition, suitable screening of such areas by wood fences and dense native evergreen hedges of five feet or more at a time and planting shall be utilized. The use of chain link fences shall be avoided except in industrial areas. Outdoor lighting, including lighting in the exterior of the building or lighting in parking areas shall be arranged to minimize glare and light spill over neighboring properties. No outdoor light shall be located more than twenty feet above the ground. Finding, the project consists of one residential driveway with twenty-seven proposed parking spaces, sixteen in a lower level garage and eleven outdoors. Shade trees are proposed adjacent to the parking area. Exterior lighting shall be arranged to minimize glare and light spill over adjacent properties, thereby meeting the requirements of the bylaw. Standard is met. Thirty-three. Section seven seventy point six J, Site Plan Approval Standard J. Safe, functional and convenient pedestrian bicycle or practical transit access and continuity of the pedestrian bicycle network within the property and to nearby pedestrian bicycle facilities and trip generators. Finding, the surrounding area provides safe, functional and convenient pedestrian access. There is a sidewalk located on New Driveway, countryway, providing access to Green Bush and the train station. A four-spaced bicycle ride is proposed. There is a walk connection to, in the site to the sidewalk. The standard is met. Based on these findings, the planning board finds the site plan review with special permit in the Build Center and Neighborhood District meets the requirements under the Build Center and Neighborhood District, Section five eighty, seven fifty, seven sixty and seven seventy, as the project will be in harmony with the general purposes of this bylaw and the requirements of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty A, and it will not have a great, greater detrimental impact on the neighborhood than a conventional residential development plan and is designed with consideration for public health and safety. Those are findings of fact.
I will second with, for discussion. Sure. Um, for some reason, I was under the impression that there was going to be a garage door.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So I'll change that.
That's on page seven.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that sort of, that goes right? It sure did. And, um, one other thing, just to be honest, is any stop and give them to a generator?
Uh, we will provide a generator, good as the elevator and whatnot.
All right, um, Karen. Now, okay, Mr. Pritchard.
Yeah, just a few things here on item number six. I'm not sure that the last, uh, part of that last sentence sort of grammatically goes together.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check, I'll check that.
Okay. Let me see what else. Um, under thirteen, I think we indicate, um, that the, this design standards must be waived. Are we indicating here that we have indeed waived, waived them as part of the findings of fact?
We did get it at the law's meetings. It's in the conditions.
Yeah.
It's in the conditions on the waivers that we vote, that we voted last time.
Okay, yeah, so I was suggesting that we say design standards, you know, must be met or waived and they have been waived or something like that, since this is finding a fact, right?
Karen, also on thirteen.
Yes, I am sorry about that.
The thirty-five.
Sorry about that. You can look at anything, ten, ten, twelve, three, five, at least, when you want to read it.
Uh, let's see. Under fourteen, on page, actually on page five, the first bullet on page five, you have a statement there that just says no square footage has been provided. Not sure why.
Yeah, I'm gonna, let's, there's, there's nothing on the plans right now. Let's take that off. There's a condition that they have to provide. They have a condition for that, so let's just take that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, let's just delete it then.
Yeah, let's delete that.
Yeah. See.
What it meant, Steve, was that they just gave percents. They didn't give any square footage.
Yeah, I, I just, it didn't seem like it was appropriate to have it there, yeah.
Okay.
Um, twenty-seven, under the findings. The second sentence starts with "they," but who is "they"? Is that the proponent or, um, is that the water department? They recommend, so we should just put whoever that is in there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll fix that.
Yep. Not sure I had. See. There was one place, oh yeah, um, on twenty-eight, under the finding, the last sentence of that first paragraph. Can we say ensures that the project will manage appropriately before, during and after?
Yes, yes.
I think that's it on my side.
Thank you. Rebecca?
I'm awesome. I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you again. Okay. Yes, Mr. Sol.
I, you know, I was wondering if you want to make reference on the first page to the most revised set of plans. I think we have the admission in page one, uh, C and E, E. You might want to stay revised nine nine twenty-two.
Well, I didn't do it there. I did it in the conditions.
Okay.
I, on the condition run, I put the most revised set of plans. I put what you actually submitted on the first email there, but it is in the conditions, my condition run.
That's fine.
Do you need a roll double check?
Yeah, do you have a second as amended?
Yes.
Second as amended.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Lember?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you, and Ann Masol in favor.
Decision. Based on the findings of fact, Chesney Mooney provided a public hearing. The planning board approves the site plan review with special permit in the building, Central Neighborhood District, and seven new driveway in the site with following conditions. Number one, general requirements. All construction work shall be done in accordance with the plan submitted by Mackenzie Engineering Group entitled Site Development Plan Proposed Residential Development, seven new driveway in Central Mass. Consisting of fifteen sheets dated July twelve twenty twenty-one, with revisions through nine nine twenty-two. Two, landscape plan, seven new driveway in Central Mass by Gray Consulting LLC, May sixth twenty twenty-two, with revisions through nine fifty twenty-two, consisting of one sheet. Three, architectural plans by Philly Turbo Architecture LLC, consisting of colored red, A one oh one four plans, A one oh two four plans, A two oh one elevation dated March sixteen twenty. That's right, we got it wrong, change that. Okay, twenty twenty-two with revisions through August thirty-one twenty twenty-two. Four, drainage calculation and stormwater management report for proposed residential development located at seven new driveway, assesses mass fifty-three block five, one fifty-seven F Central Mass dated July twelve twenty twenty-one, with revisions through section nine twenty twenty-two. Five, the sewer system review of the seven new driveway we developed in Central Mass by Weston and S F C A dated January four twenty twenty-two. The water service evaluation for seven new driveway we developed in Central Mass dated January four twenty twenty-two. Volumes and fill within the Water Resource Protection District by, uh, Smith twenty twenty-two and any additional revisions needed to conform to the conditions contained herein in the VCTA Site Plan Review and TM and PACR special permit. Five, ability elevations must be approved by the town plan prior to issuance of a building permit for performance to save material. A copy of the approved plant conditions must be kept onsite at all times for construction. Two, where the site plan review with special permit compliance approval, permitting or licensing for any local state or county agents with such combined approval, permitting or licenses, keep a condition of the town's central planning board, uh, planning board on the board, approval of the site plan review with VCTA special permit included, but not made to approval of work by the Board of Selectment and the Department of Public Works DPW in all public rights way, including driveway. Construction shall meet all applicable federal, state and local laws and regulations included, but not made to those considered DPW, White Department, Building Department, Water Department, planning board as well as Massachusetts DPW and the State Building Code. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to construction. Three, construction shall meet all requirements of the Citron Zone Bylaw and all conditions of approval shall be inscribed on the site plan review and the VCTA special permit clause. Four, the applicant shall meet the current average of all its successors of interest. The site plan review with special permit shall lapse within two years which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal under General Law Chap. Forty Days, Section seventeen, from the Board of Y. If a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause or in the case of special permit, local structure, if construction has not been done by such date except for good cause. The planning board may extend such period called good cause show upon receiving a written request in the applicant prior to the expiration of said date, which request shall provide a detailed description of the good cause to assess the date and extension. A public hearing may be required. Five, the total number of residential dwellers on the site shall not exceed nineteen. And there will be five one-bedroom units and fourteen two-bedroom units. There will be five affordable units constructed on site and one sixty-five dash plus seven stock control in a group home for each bedroom where town has an affordable unit eligible for inclusion in the town's specific HI. The total number of bedrooms on the site shall not exceed thirty-three. A bedroom shall be defined in accordance to the Title V of the State Sanitary Code. Massachusetts Architectural Access Board requirements must be met and all new construction at the sites shall be under condominium ownership. Six, the applicant shall locate the planning dwelks with the planning board or the site plan review in the VCTA special permit within nine days of the expiration of the appeal period and this decision can be filed on conditions that were conscribed on the plan prior to endorsement. Seven, uses allowed on the site shall be restricted to users allowed in Zone A. Uses prohibited out of Section five two oh four six of the Citron Zone Bylaw. The storage of fertilizers or pesticides is not allowed unless they are covered or contaminated. Eight, no rainfall washing is to occur on the site. Nine, new designated new building shall be numbered on the outside or on a map in the building log for identification, fire protection and emergency spill spots purposes. Ten, the planning board is not the special permit making authority for the salt marsh and highland conservation district or the floodway and watershed protection district. In this decision does not incorporate any approval of conditions related to those districts as the only one of the others, except for the rating authority for those districts. Um, we, we don't need to read the waivers, we.
We don't need to read the waivers.
Okay, so board approved four waivers last time.
So we approved the four ways, it's gonna go right down to fifty, to be clear.
Right. Village Parkway Traffic and Street Improvements, fifteen. Maintenance and repair of the driveway and parking areas, stormwater management systems, snow removal, lighting and landscaping shall be the responsibility of the applicant, um, applicant until condominium association is formed and responsibility for the same has been transferred to the condominium association. Sixty. All parking is limited to designated spaces as shown on the plan. Eleven, surface parking spaces, including one handicap accessible space and sixteen garage spaces, garage parking spaces, including one handicap accessible space are provided. Seventeen. Soil testing is required prior to construction of the patio and previous A booth walkway. Consulting engineer must be present and prove best results. Eighteen. No new underground irrigation system shall be allowed to connect to the town's water distribution system or in any manner use municipal water in accordance with the policy created effective by the Board of Selectment on October eighth, two thousand and fourteen, and reaffirmed by the Citroen Water Commissioners on May twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen. All irrigation systems installed in accordance with all C must be supplied by onsite sources or private owner suppliers at the expense of the property owner. Nineteen. The applicant shall allow members and town officials of the planning board and other persons acting under the authority of the planning board as its agents to enter upon any lands and carry out such surveys and inspections as may be deemed necessary and place to maintain monuments and marks. The applicant shall cooperate with the planning board and town officials and assist them in their efforts to verify that the layout, design and construction work in the special permit plan are satisfactory and conform to the, the town specifications and requirements of the planning board. Twenty. An independent inspector contracted or employed through the town shall perform the required construction inspections according to Section nine point zero of the subdivision regulations. All required inspections shall take place and be inspected by the inspector, including water and sanitary sewage facilities. The inspector shall be approved by the town planner and DPW and shall work under the direction of the town planner. The cost for these inspections shall be paid by the owner. Written reports shall be submitted to the applicant and the planning board anytime and manner stating the results of any and all required inspections during construction unless more frequent, frequent reports are needed. Forty-eight hours notice, minimum advance, forty-eight hours notice, minimum advance notices required for all inspections. All stormwater recharge structures require inspection of the bottom of the excavation uh, by the consulting engineer. Noise dust and air quality control shall be in accordance with the E P regulations. Construction, twenty-one. Construction of the proposed driveways, parking areas, proposed drainage system, proposed water system and proposed sewage system shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer. Said supervising engineer shall certify in writing to the planning board and DPW at completion that the proposed driveways, parking areas, drainage system, water system and sewer system were conducted, constructed in accordance with the approved plans and that said systems are functioning in full accordance with the approved design.
The certification of the proposed driveways, parking areas and utilities shall be accompanied by an, by as-built plans signed and stamped by a professional land surveyor and supervising registered professional engineer. Prior to issuance of an occupancy permit for the building, a registered professional engineer shall inspect the exterior of the building as necessary and certify to the planning board and building commissioner with his signature and stamp on an as-built plan that the grading and stormwater management systems performs to that show on the site plan review and VCTA special permit plans and are functioning in accordance with the design requirements and any variation in grade is immaterial and does not materially alter the performance of the stormwater system. The site development as-built include building structures, tuckoff agree roadways, water sewers. water sewer, gas, cable, fiber optic, electrical, and storm drainage. Infrastructure will be submitted in AutoCAD format twenty thirteen or higher or ESRI interchange format registered to the Massachusetts State Plan Maintenance Ordinance, North America Data nineteen eighty-three compatible with the town system along with stamped and signed copies of said plans. All, twenty-two, all materials for utility construction shall meet DPW construction standards. Twenty-one, a street opening permit shall be obtained from each individual utility connection. Twenty-four, core cut permit shall be obtained from DPW prior to the pre-construction conference. Twenty-five, the applicant shall eliminate the existing driveway openings as necessary onto new Dr. Way and add sidewalk and vertical granite curb to match existing walk and curb to DPW standards. Saw cutting of the pavement and ADA accessible access is required. Twenty-six, a determination of adequacy of the existing water service slash fire flow for the proposed new shall be provided by the applicant to the DPW and town planner for their approval prior to scheduling a pre-construction conference. Installation of all water mains and uppersons shall be performed according to the specifications of the DPW. Any required upgrades, modifications to connections shall meet at the applicant's expense. Prior to endorsement, the plans must be revised as noted below. Separate connections apply a domestic service to the existing twelve-inch watering area required. Within a single town at the street property line is not acceptable. The water service that serves the existing buildings should be identified on the plans. Notes should be added to abandon the existing water service by excavating, closing, and capping the corporation stock. If existing Ts are found, they should be removed and replaced with twelve-inch ductile iron water main and solid sleeve couplings. The proposed new six-inch ductile iron water main service connection could be located at the abandoned service location and could potentially reuse the connections if they are found to be of a required size and in good condition. The new service connection could be made with a T gate valve and solid sleeve couplings instead of proposed tapping sleeve and gate valve. A new hydrant shall be located in the southeast corner of the entrance driveway. The exact location should be determined in the field by the, by DPW engineer. The existing hydrant at the site front shall be replaced with a new one by, a new hydrant. All hydrants shall meet town situation standards. The size of the proposed domesticified large services should be confirmed. Sizes to domestic and fire lines should be provided on revised plan to the plan to plan and prior to application for a building permit. Fire flow conditions shall be calculated for the Westwood and Samson report. Twenty-seven, the applicant should obtain all necessary approvals from the use town sewer prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference in any construction commencing. Any required upgrades, modifications to connections shall be at the applicant's expense. Installation of all sewer mains and uppersons shall be performed according to the specifications of the DPW sewer division. Copies of all necessary approvals shall be furnished to the town planner by the applicant. Prior to endorsement, the plans must be revised as noted below. Based on the previous blockage slash search act of the system and upon the existence of F O G at Carrington Farm Station, it is required that the applicant perform light cleaning and closed circuit television, closed caption TV, inspection of the existing sewer lines between S M H Station O plus O five W and Station four plus O four, West New Jerk Way. See record drawing C slash A to better define the current conditions of these existing tributary heights.
Existing sewer service from New Jerk into the site shall be cleaned in a CCTV inspection performed as it was proposed to be used for the new building. Sewer cleanout shall have a metal cover. Twenty-eight, all replacement of or connection to town sewer drainage and installation of water mains and uppersons shall be performed according to the specifications of the Citroen DPW with independent inspector contractor employed by the town to review the construction activity in a shared compliance with the town rules and regulations. DPW personnel must be in attendance for any sewer drain, drainage, and water infrastructure and maintenance work in the town or right-of-way and on the project site. In addition, the following must be addressed to the satisfaction of the town sewer division prior to the commencement of construction. A, confirmation that newly constructed manual structures, if any, shall be vacuum tested and paid for by the applicant. The test must also be witnessed by the sewer division and/or by the town's approved independent inspector. B, confirmation that newly constructed sewer lines must be pressure tested in accordance with the town's test standards and the test must be witnessed by the sewer division and/or by the town's approved independent inspector. Sewer permits are required for the building. Any building with a sewer unit that hasn't received a betterment will owe a sixteen thousand dollar connection to the first sewer unit. D, external cleanouts and view ports. Each building line shall have an external cleanout. E, the privately constructed sewer infrastructure will be owned and shall be maintained at all times by the applicant. Sewer line from the property line is owned by the property owner. Twenty-nine, the building, parking, walkways, and required signs shall meet all applicable requirements of the ADA, MAAB, and Citroen Commission on Disabilities and Affordability. Thirty, the applicant shall ensure that signs, landscaping, and other features located within the site triangle areas of the project's site driveways and the intersection of New Jerk Way are designed, installed, and maintained so as not to impede lines of sight two and a half feet in height. Thirty-one, all signs and pavement markings to be installed shall conform to the applicable specifications of the manual and mobile traffic control devices and U T C D. All pavement markings in the public way shall be thermoplastic. Forty-two, the applicant shall ensure that the property manager promptly removes snow windrows located within the site triangle areas of the project's site driveway intersections between New Jerk Way exceed three and a half feet in height or, whether otherwise, inhibit site lines. Thirty-three, snow storage areas have not been designated on-site. The applicant shall provide snow storage areas on-site planned prior to endorsement. The applicant shall ensure all maintenance personnel are informed of snow storage locations. When on-site capacity exceeds and off-site locations shall be used in compliance without federal, state, or local laws, de-icing and scanning agents can only be stored on-site if they are covered or contained. Thirty-four, trash management shall be internal to the building. Dumpsters proposed with a concrete dumpster pad. The trash removal shall occur as often as needed so degrees not placed outside the covered dumpster. Thirty-five, all electrical, telephone, cable, and similar utilities shall be located underground. Thirty-six, except for the town-owned segments of the sewer and water main, sewer and water line from the property line outward, all utilities, including but not limited to the stormwater drainage, shall be maintained by the applicant according to the Post-Development Best Management Practices, Operation and Maintenance Plan, and Long-Term Pollution Prevention Plan, revised dated September ninth, twenty twenty-two by McKenzie Engineering Group, and which are attached to this decision. Town or Citroen contact information must be updated prior to endorsement to include the town planner. Post-development best managed practices, operation and maintenance plan, and long-term pollution prevention plan shall be provided to all property owners and all occupants of the property as conditions of their ownership agreements. Thirty-seven, post-development best managed practices, operation and maintenance plan, and long-term pollution prevention plan must be revised and re-submitted prior to endorsement to restrict sulfur de-icing and restrict pesticide, fertilizer use to none on-site and to have no vehicle washing on-site. Only best managed practices used on-site should be listed in the plan. The person responsible for plant compliance must be listed by name as well as phone and email provided.
Thirty-eight, if the drainage system is not performing as designed and conditioned when stormwater is observed, belly to biting properties or some students, stormwater regarding, can request necessary mitigation to remedy the situation. This condition applies to all construction activities that survive to issuance of a certificate of completion. Thirty-nine, no separate stormwater permit is required as long as the site is built according to your approved plans and stormwater calculations. Forty, the media and the rain dam must be replaced if the system is flagged by close to store. Planning and conservation requirements must be notified prior to replacement. Forty-one, electric vehicle charging stations shall be provided for two vehicles that use by residents of the development. Forty-two, a weather-protected bicycle ramp shall be provided within the parking garage. And forty-three, no gated entry is allowed now or in the future. Affordability. Forty-four, all affordable units shall meet the requirements for inclusion in subsidized housing inventory and through the state's local initiative program or other civil state approved program in effect at the time of application. Forty-five, according to Section seventy-five four of the Zone Bylaw, for projects receiving a density bonus, not less than twenty percent of housing units constructed shall be affordable housing. Four, affordable units are required for nineteen units receiving density bonus. Technically, your affordable units are part of the project, of the project total number of units. Thus, twenty-three units requires four point six units or five units of affordable housing as any fracture unit is due to cost to a one unit. A group home is proposed off-site. The group home is proposed to have five bedrooms, where each bedroom shall have as many bedroom units of the house as S H I. And the five units of affordable housing required for the project will be met upon completion of the construction of seven hundred way in a structure of a project. The affordable units shall be constructed simultaneously with the market rating units. No certificate of occupancy will be issued for seven hundred way unless and until one sixty-five, one sixty-seven Stock Control receives a certificate of occupancy, and this condition cannot be waived without the rate of special permit notification by the planning board after due notice of a public hearing. Forty-seven, prior to issuance of a building permit for seven hundred way in one sixty-five, one sixty-seven Stock Control, the following must be received by the planning board in the Affordable Housing Trust. A, a deed restriction for affordability in perpetuity. B, a copy of the development agreement duly executed by all necessary parties. C, a purchase and sales agreement of one property of one sixty-five, one sixty-seven Stock Control, duly executed by all necessary parties. D, architectural and engineering plans, site development permits, schedule of developments for one sixty-five, one sixty-seven Stock Control. E, the applicant must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the monitoring agent that the method by which affordable rents or prices are computed shall be consistent with State Federal Law by Affordable Applicable to Citroen. F, proof in a form acceptable to town council that the common law will accept the proposed group home for inclusion on the subsidized housing inventory as a lit project for other civil state approved program in effect at the time of application. And forty-eight, the applicant shall perform a local unit action application for other civil state approved program for the affordable units to be submitted to D H C D by the municipality chief elected official, where the applicant shall provide the town plan and town council with the paperwork provided to the common law to have the offsite affordable units incorporated in the S H I prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for seven hundred way. The applicant shall also provide the town planning and building commissioner with proof that the group home has been voted licensed by all applicable state agencies prior to physical occupancy of the group home. All deed restrictions shall be enforced in perpetuity. Provided to the L I P program or other state approved program must be presented to the town planner within ten days of occupancy permit for one sixty-five, one sixty-seven Stock Control.
Erosion. Erosion control, uh, phasing. Forty-nine, an erosion control plan with preliminary sequence of construction has been provided. The plan shall be updated and provided to the board prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting and prior to commencement of construction. The plan shall comply with the Wetlands Protection Act and the order conditions for the project. Fifty, stock piles must be located outside the one-hundred-foot buffer zone of wetland re, of wetland resource areas and be protected with erosion control. Fifty-one, stock piles shall be located, as shown on the plans, and must be protected with erosion controls, including the melt limited to silt socks and temporary seeding. Environmental conditions, poison dust. Fifty-two, site noise levels shall conform to the mass EDP condition of air quality controls, noise policy. A baseline condition shall be taken and submitted and not modified to the commencement of any construction activities. Fifty-three, the applicant shall follow all regulations under the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, three ten C M R, uh, seven point zero zero, air pollution control, seven point zero one, general regulations to prevent air pollution, and three ten C M R, seven point zero nine, U dust, or seven point zero nine U, dust odor, construction and demolition. Per three ten C M R, seven point zero nine U, dust odor, construction and demolition. Water must be used to prevent excessive emission of particulate matter throughout the construction project. Fifty-four, the applicant shall not operate any concrete crushing machinery on the project site. Fifty-five, a dust control plan must be provided to the planning board and Board of Health for review and approval prior to the pre-construction conference. Landscaping, site amenities, density bonus, and public realm improvement. Fifty-six, all changes to the proposed plans must be presented to the town planner for approval. The town planner or the planning board inspector shall have the right to approve minor changes or deviations from the approved plan, plans, and/or any detail needed for lighting, signage, paving material, fencing, or landscaping. All other changes shall be provided by the planning board. Material selection shall be provided to the town planner forward-refered compliant with the approved plans prior to installation. Fifty-seven, a separate sign permit shall be required from the building department uh, for any freestanding signs unless otherwise exempted under the Zone Bylaws. Signs shall be fully located on the applicant's property and shall not block site lines for traffic and interior ingress from the site. Fifty-eight, a density bonus of four units has been requested, not including the affordable units for the project. The planning board may approve this additional density bonus by special permit if the applicant provides benefits to the residents of the project in the VCT district and surrounding area. Finding number nine indicates that the applicant has agreed to provide a contribution of seventy thousand dollars to fund pure improvements, maintenance, repair, and reconstruction and associated engineering in the Dr. Way Conservation Park located in the area of the project and included in the town's two thousand and eighteen Open Space and Recreation Plan, or any other project acceptable to the planning board and town planner. This contribution is made in lieu of meeting physical requirements for a density bonus under Section five eighty point four of the City of the Zone Bylaw. The applicant has agreed to stipulate and express certain terms or conditions of the contribution. That funds shall be placed in interest-bearing account and that the interests on the funds may remain with and become part of the account and may be expended as part thereof by the planning board without further appropriation. Use of the funds for specific period improvement slash maintenance in the Dr. Way Conservation Park shall be approved by the county administrator, town planner, planning board, and conservation commissioner. The applicant shall provide such funds to the town prior to commencement of construction. Fifty-nine, the applicant has received, has agreed to contribute the sum of ten thousand dollars to fund traffic and pedestrian improvements, such studies in the Green Bush Dr. Way area as approved by the planning board. The applicant has agreed to stipulate and express certain terms or conditions of the contribution that the funds shall be placed in an interest-bearing account and that the interests on the funds may remain with and become part of the account and may be expended as part thereof by the planning board without further appropriation. Use of the funds for specific improvements shall be approved by the town planner, planning board, and town administrator. The applicant shall provide such funds to the town prior to commencement of construction. Sixty, all proposed longs and swale areas shall have a minimum of six inches of clean screen lube. A bill of lateness shall be provided to the town planner during construction to show that the lube is clean. Sixty-one, the parking garage is visible from New Dr. Way or, if the parking garage is visible from New Dr. Way or countrywide, the planning board shall require plantings to hide the garage prior to certificate of occupancy.
Sixty-two, outdoor amenity areas must be shown by type, size, in square feet, a percentage of lot area, and labeled on plan prior to endorsement. Sixty-three, a minimum of three city amenities shall be provided for in the patio area available for year-round use. Sixty-four, additional planting screening shall be provided between handicap ramp and walk in the property line to be shown on the plan prior to endorsement. Architectural design. Sixty-five, the building shall be constructed in accordance with the architectural elevations and plans submitted for the project. The quality and materials, construction, and colors shall not substantially deviate from those shown on the elevations and discussed during the public hearing without review and approval of the planning board. Sixty-six, the final building plans standby and registered architect shall be provided to the planning department prior to a building permit being issued for review for consistency with the elevations and renderings describing. with the elevations and renderings describing condition one. If the plans appear inconsistent, approval by the planning board will be required. Sixty-seven, low reflectivity glass is required. Sixty-eight, calculations for gutter capacity, down, downstout sizing, and pipe sizing shall be submitted and approved by the consulting engineer prior to issuance of a building permit. Sixty-nine, revised architectural plans and site plans shall be, shall be submitted prior to endorsement showing the flood flow p- panels for the site. A revised operation and maintenance plan shall also be submitted to incorporate cleanup from flooding. Seventy, a certification shall be provided to the town planner by architect, by the architect prior to a certificate of occupancy that the building as constructed is in substantial compliance with the approved plans. Required prior to scheduling the pre-conference, pre-construction conference. Seventy-one, the applicant shall provide draft condominium trust documents and a master deed review to include the proposed owners of the units in the residential buildings town council review. Pursuant to general laws, chapter one eighty-three A, the condominium master deed and condominium trust document must be record, recorded prior to any use of the units that comprise condominium. The condominium master deed and trust documents in the final quote shall include A, a statement that the driveway, parking areas, drainage system, sewer, landscaping, amenity spaces, and other common areas shall be owned by the applicant and/or the future unit owner's organization herein after the condominium association, and shall be maintained by the applicant and condominium association, and shall not be the responsibility of the town to maintain. The driveway, drainage system, landscaping, lighting, stormwater, leaching system, and other common areas shall be expected, maintained, and repaired by the applicant or the condominium association. This shall also be stated in and of, out of the plans prior to endorsement. B, a requirement that maintenance of the drainage system, parking, driveways, and landscaping shall be in court, be in accordance with the post-development best management practice, practices, operation, and maintenance plan and long-term pollution prevention plan approved by the planning board's consulting engineers. Provisions for the snow removal and maintenance of safe conditions through the winter of all vehicle and pedestrian ways has been provided, and a description of a required annual maintenance of the driveway, parking areas, landscaping, lighting, and other common amenities. C, a table of number and general location of practice basis assigned to each area. D, the revised post-development best management practice, operation, and maintenance plan and long-term pollution prevention plan shall be provided to the planning board as a standalone document. E, a requirement that after the applicant completes the construction of all the units and units who see final occupancy certificates, and the condominium association shall maintain and account always containing a reserve equal to one year's cost of maintenance. A contractor's estimate of this maintenance and proof of the available funds in the account shall be provided to the planning board with the agreement annually on January thirty-one of every year. F, requirement that the condominium association notify the planning board of the name, address, phone number, and email of the trustees within fourteen calendar days of their election and to provide an annual report of the maintenance activities to the planning office on January thirty-one of every year.
G, a requirement that the applicant, known effect contractors, builders, and real estate agents that membership in the condominium association is required along with parking available to each unit are required to be disclosed to all prospective buyers. Copies of condominium master deed and condominium association documents shall be provided to prospective buyers and owners. Proof of owner receipt must be provided to the planning board with seventy-two hours of the sale. Seventy-two, prior to scheduling a pre-construction conference, the applicant shall provide to the planning board A, copies of the recorded site plan review and special permanent plans; B, a check to cover the cost of inspections by the town's consulting engineer. These shall include at a minimum inspections of subdivision rules and regulations, section nine point oh, for the driveway, parking areas, walks, patios, and stormwater management systems, water system, municipal sewage connection, and sanitary sewage line, new curbing, and erosion and dust control measures, as well as any specific requirements contained herein which may require review and or inspections by the town. A specific amount shall be provided by the planning department based on the consulting engineer's testament, shall be subject to amendment from time to time, and shall be supplemented by the applicant as requested by the planning department. C, construction schedule including approximate date for installation of erosion control and other site protection slash stabilization, construction of buildings and all applicable items in the subdivision rule of regulations, section nine point zero, and D, a type and amount of security provided by the applicant reasonably satisfactory to the planning board to cover the satisfactory completion of site and infrastructure features shown on the site plan, including landscaping, parking, drainage, signs, lighting, and related conditions involved by the board. The amount shall be based on the applicant's contractor's estimate of costs of these items reviewed by the town's consulting engineer and shall be approved by the planning board prior to approved construction progress. E, provide contact data for the site contractor, general contractor, and twenty-four hour number for responsible party in the event of an emergency. Required prior to the start of construction. Seventy-three, within two calendar weeks prior to the applicant's notification to the site, uh, sorry, to the town planner that it intends to commence any work on the project site, pre-construction conference shall be held with the applicant, the representatives, their engineer, site contractors, the town planner, the town engineer, and other D P W representatives as necessary. Police department, the planning board's consulting engineer, and other representatives of the town as the board feels are necessary. A list of all contractor contacts, including names and telephone numbers, shall be provided to the planning board, D P W, and police department. At least one telephone contact shall be available twenty-four hours per day in the event of an emergency. Seventy-four, the property lines of the subject property shall be marked or flagged in the field under the direction of a surveyor and notification given to the town planner and consulting engineer, a minimum of three business days prior to the start of construction. Property line shall be staked or pinned at all times during construction. Seventy-five, stabilized construction entrance and sill fence slash sock must be installed prior to any earth disturbing activities on site, including but not limited to clearing and rubbing. Construction fencing shall be required as necessary to comply with federal, state, and local laws. Required during construction. Seventy-six, construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM weekdays and eight AM on Saturday, and shall cease no later than seven PM or dusk, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sunday or legal, state, or federal holidays. Seventy-seven, board reserves the right to require the consulting engineer to visit the site weekly or as often as necessary during construction to observe and report on matters within scope of the planning board's authority. Seventy-eight, all earth moving slash disturbance operations shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures are in place and approved by the town planner or town's consulting engineer. Such control measures shall remain in place until reports consulting engineer determines after consultation with the town planner that the danger of erosion or sedimentation no longer exists. It is the applicant's imperative responsibility to ensure the maintenance and management of all stormwater patrol measures at all times during construction to ensure that there are no increases in stormwater flow velocity or volume to abiding properties at any time. Seventy-nine, construction activity on site shall conform to the town situated general bylaws.
Eighty, no sediment, including soaking water, shall be allowed to use the site during construction. Any one of parking or parking on Driftway shall be permitted, permitted during construction unless appropriate rates get controlled at the same time by the police department, and construction vehicles shall use designated construction access. Eighty-two, the applicant shall notify the central police department forty-eight hours of agreements of any significant equipment in construction here or arrival to the site which may cause safety hazard or material disruption at the public way, such that a police detail is necessary to ensure safe passage. Any police detail required is at the expense of the applicant and is required when a police department is in check as needed. Eighty-three, the applicant shall not allow any harsh construction equipment on trucks to stay on public roads, which shall not allow such equipment on trucks to arrive on site prior to seven AM. Police details may be required at construction access over a legal layout of the Driftway. Eighty-four, the applicant shall provide the town with roots, construction type of roof so that it's a safety hazard, or material disruption of the public way, and keep safe passage, a police detail will be taken by the applicant at its expense. Construction activity shall be conducted in a workerlike manner at all times, while we adjust to the degree, shall be controlled by the applicant for stabilization, flooding dock, or other proper storage and disposal methods. Eighty-six, no use of hydrants on site, R R J's arose on site is allowed for construction use. A hydrant may be available at the water supply for construction using, construction use during non-watering times. Eighty-seven, your nephew reduced noise levels, the applicant shall keep all equipment that amine south from structures on site improper work we want through regular maintenance. Eighty-eight, blasting if necessary shall be conducted according to unnecessary permits in the all requirements and services provided by you. In prior, per, required for, prior to issuance of a occupancy permit. Eighty-nine, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the planning board and voting commissioners are satisfied that the driveway, parking area, and installation of necessary utilities is in full compliance with the different plans and site plan to do. Ninety, prior to application for a certificate of occupancy, a copy of the contract inspection to maintenance of the stormwater system for the operation of maintenance point shall be provided to the planning office. Ninety-one, permanent sites indicating that prohibited uses and requirements by daily of hazardous materials shall be installed in each commercial unit in a proper location prior to getting a certificate of occupancy. Really verification signed shall be submitted, signed shall be submitted for review approved by the town planner. Ninety-two, a follow-up review approved by town council and the planning board, the condominium master deed and condominium association documents shall be recorded at the registry of deeds prior to the voting department's issuance of any occupancy permits. Proof of reporting must be provided to the planning board. And prior to applying for occupancy permit, the applicant shall provide A, a copy of an estimated legislature and rhetoric between the developer, the municipality, and D H C D to ensure long-term affordability. B, the proposed sale price of the affordable units and the estimated condominium fee. C, a draft deed restriction to restrict the subsequent price of the condominium to eighty percent of the area net income according to the Department of Housing and Community Development D H C D in perpetuity. A draft deed restriction shall be approved by town council and corporate reporting provided to the planning board prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit for affordable units. D, a plan showing the location of the affordable unit for the building and planning department. E, the gaming contact information for agencies, companies, or individuals who will get that marketing, hold the lottery, and perform the monitoring. F, a draft affirmative marketing plan meeting the guidelines for approval of D H C D. The marketing plan must affirmatively provide outreach to area monopoly units to notify them of the availability of the unit and must demonstrate the need for local preference as well as ensure there will be no discriminatory impacts as a result of local preference criteria. If the plan does not meet T H C D's requirement for inclusion of the unit on the subsidized housing inventory, revisions will be required prior to the occupancy permit. And G, any changes to the affordability documents must be provided by the town planner. Must be approved by the town planner.
Administration. Ninety-four, at all, all time periods referenced in this document for completion of conditions shall be pulled in case any appeals are taken. Ninety-five, the site plan review and special permit shall run with the land and shall be void if it is not reported at the registry of deeds within one hundred and twenty days of expiration of the appeal period or such extension of that time period granted by the planning board following, following approval of the special permit. The applicant shall provide proof that the special permit was reported to the planning board. Ninety-six, the planning board may, in its discretion, waive or modify conditions of this special permit at a duly called meeting of the, of the board if the board determines that such waiver modification is insignificant and does not materially adversely affect the purpose of this special permit decision. Ninety-seven, the special permit shall last within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use or construction is commenced prior to that time in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, chapter four A, section nine. Ninety-eight, all plan sheets of the site plan review and V C N special permit shall be recorded at the registry of deeds. Ninety-nine, all construction work shall be done in accordance with the plans. Failure to comply with any condition of this permit shall cause it, it to be deemed invalid. One hundred, any condition contained herein that varies from the plan supersedes the plan where due.
That is the discussion. I'll, I'll, I'll go state that I know that this is a very long, long process. It's taken us a year to get here, and for those of you who have gotten here before, I'm sorry, we've got to cut the drive. If you were here all the other times, this would all make sense to me. So I just want to kind of lay that out for everybody. Is there any discussion for the board, Mr. Pritchett?
Uh, yeah, I have, I have a few things. Item number ten is fine, I think, as written, but do we need somewhere a, a statement that says, you know, prior to commencement of construction that these, you know, the, that these special permits have been obtained?
Well, we say, we do say that, number two. Well, we tell, say all affordable permits, I can put in Z B A in there if you want under number two.
Yes, please, I, I just think this, because we don't really want to start into construction or anything until the Z B A is done, that's right.
I'll add Z B A.
Okay.
Any else?
Yeah, I'm just going back to like twenty-eight E. This may just be, whether we're consistent with these going through, but we say that they should be owned and maintained at all times by the applicant, but it's, this would really be the applicant and/or the condo association, wouldn't it?
Yes, thank you. Yes.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. And then, then on thirty-three, the last sentence talks about deicing and sanding agents can only be stored on site if covered, but then in thirty-seven, we say none shall be used on site.
Okay, thirty-seven.
Well, should we change thirty-three or thirty-seven? We're saying.
Thirty-three came from the comment from the Water Resources Committee. They said it's okay to have them as long as they're covered. So I'll, I'll have thirty-two and thirty-three match.
Yeah, it, it looks like to me thirty-seven is saying no, no salt for deicing, right? So maybe these are different kinds of deicing agents you're talking about. So none should be used on site, they're saying, so if there none should be used, there shouldn't be anything stored on site.
Water Resources Committee said they could be, at my preference would be they not, but Water Resource said they could if they were in covered containers, because we are in Zone A.
Yeah, but we're, we're saying, uh, not to use them, so it's our decision, so we get to make the final decision, right?
Right, and I agree that they shouldn't use it. We can't keep track of what our last stuff is covered.
Right. I would just take out that last sentence in thirty-three.
Okay.
And then on fifty-eight.
Wait, can we just go back to that one real quick, Steve?
Sure, yeah.
Um, is, is it a difference between salt and sand? Is that the difference, Karen, or no de, no deicing? Do you know what I'm asking you?
Yeah.
Well, we could say sanding agents can be stored on site, right? It's sand, sand can be stored on site, right?
But is the issue having whatever they're going to be using for deicing, is it, is the issue having it contained, or is it the actual chemical that's being used, or actual?
I would use the chemical, right? No chemicals, no chemicals.
Well, I mean, so salt, N A C L, you know? Like, is it, is it like the product, is it the fact, like, is it not having certain things used as deicers, or is it just not, like, you don't want it to be in a pile?
There's no salt allowed in Zone A.
No, there is no salt allowed.
That's what I think.
Chloride or whatever.
We can't have it there anyways, just because it's not allowed, right? So for no one B C.
Or deicing agent.
We're saying no to the deicing agents, right?
Well, there are.
There are other deicing agents. I mean, there's calcium, chloride, and different things like that, but, you know, I could, I could put, you know.
I would, we could just say that allowable deicing and sanding agents need to be stored and covered, or
Yeah, that would cover it.
They need to be stored in covered containers.
I'll make the two match.
Uh, let's see.
Steven, you all set?
No, hold on a sec.
Yeah.
I lost my place again here.
Oh, no.
Fifty-six, I think you said.
Fifty-six or fifty-eight or something, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we talk in there sort of halfway through, we talk about the two thousand eighteen open space and recreation plan, or any other project acceptable to the planning board and town planner. And I, I would say that it should just be acceptable to the planning board that the town planner could provide recommendations, but at the end of the day, the planning board would have the sort of decision-making authority on that.
Okay.
And then, um, this, this might just be how things are worded here, but in seventy-one, item B, it says a requirement that, and then when you go to, uh, the three little I's, a description of the required annual maintenance. It just, something's kind of missing there. Maybe, maybe it should say a requirement that a description of the yada, yada, yada is provided by the applicant or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, that was, that was everything.
Rebecca?
Nope, that's, that, I'm fine.
Well, Dan? Ian?
My only concern is about thirty years versus perpetuity. You know, these affordable units.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Anne, I didn't hear your comment, could you repeat that?
My concern is thirty years versus perpetuity. Thirty years from now, would these affordable units, regardless of who or what they are, suddenly become something else? As opposed to inper- what is in perpetuity?
We're requiring the deed restriction in perpetuity.
Okay, but it also says in here thirty years.
Well, right now, that's all that they're, that's all that right now they have an agreement for at least for thirty years.
Okay.
So then in thirty years coming, they'll have to
renegotiate.
Re-negotiate something.
But the deed restriction would be in perpetuity.
All right, I, I just wanted to clarify that.
That's it, it's all right, it's all right.
All right, thank you.
Got it.
Yeah, I think it runs with the way we spell it.
All right, fine, thank you.
You all set?
I'm all set.
Uh, condition ninety-one should be strictly one, yeah. There, I mean, there's a little other type of thing here, but, uh, correct. I mean, perpetuity should be strictly.
Hey, um, one, one, one more item on thirty-six, I, I think it's kind of the same comment as before, as it says. It says it should be maintained by the applicant, and I think that should be, or the condominium association, right?
What, what did you say, Steve? Sorry, I got it.
I'm sorry, I, item thirty-six. I, I just think we have to add or condominium association there.
Thank you. What about ninety-three, Karen?
You want to strike ninety-three, strike eight?
D?
D. Okay.
I, I was wondering, Karen, if it makes sense to reference the development agreement there?
Yeah, I, I
Because some of this stuff, I'm not sure really applies the way we're doing this.
Right, I know, I know, and I thought of that after that, so would it be acceptable to the board if Terry Sala and I worked on the wording for ninety-three?
Yes, sure.
So I'm, I'm sorry, what, what would the change, what would the principal change be? I, I didn't quite hear everything, so.
To make it coordinate with the development agreement.
Oh, okay, yeah, that would make sense, in my, my view, anyway.
Yes, I mean, just so everybody knows, we do have a signed development agreement from the applicant, the Affordable Housing Trust, and C I L to develop the, um, affordable units.
So, uh, second is amended?
Can I just ask a couple of questions? Seventy-two, I think there's a, a reference to a type of security. So in D, seventy-two D, Karen?
Yeah.
So, I, I, you know, I'm just trying to clarify, is that like a bond or a covenant?
It's not covenant, it's either cash or a bond.
And then, um, on nineteen, on twenty-two, we talked about the consultant coming in with notice. And I guess nineteen talks about the planning board coming to the site, and I wonder if that should be with notice too? So the applicant can make sure the guests control the site?
Say that again?
Yeah, so, um, actually, I think it was, uh, page nineteen, I think, it was not at nineteen. So there was talk about the planning board coming to the site.
Yeah.
And I was thinking maybe with notice. And I think below, we talked about consulting with notice, I just thought consistency. So it's on page sixteen, number nineteen?
Well, wait, no, I don't agree with that, uh, we, 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 we need to be able to come to the site when we need to come to the site. I mean, if there's, if it's raining and some water is going outside, I'm not going to ask permission to come to the site, I'm going to come to the site.
I just thought it would be excessive, I mean, it says that consultant will come with notice, I just figured we'd say it from the planning board.
Uh, well, no, unfortunately, Karen gets filed out of our particular reasons to, 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 to see if something is got to run, I would report the site. You all set for vote, then?
The second is amended again.
Second is amended.
All in favor, Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you, and Massal in favor.
I'd like to make the vote, so we'll just vote here.
All in favor, say aye. Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Burbine? Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you, and Massal in favor.
Well, all right, so I, the last extension was through November thirtieth. So we have until November thirtieth to file this decision with the town clerk, provided all the taxes are paid. We'll begin the job waiting for November thirtieth.
We will.
I mean, but, I mean, so, but we, that was what the extension was for. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
It was a long haul.
We're on a first-name basis now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and patience.
And for you, Wes, well, I, I think we've been to the part of just not a problem.
I think we'll be, something will be a problem. Seeing as I won't be a resident.
Okay.
Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice fall week. The last, uh, next quarter, which is a discussion of the vote of the surety reduction, the C side at Citrus. So if you could state your name and all that stuff, who you are, what you do, what you need.
Sure, um, Amy, I'm Brian Wyner with the Toll Brothers. We submitted a request for a blower down. Last time was about two years ago. And we received a recommendation from Wesley White, who weren't comfortable with what they recommended. Because other items to talk about were pushing as hard as we can to get to the end of the project.
Well, we are aware that, um, we, we do come under the domain of the older need, or we can only really discuss the surety reduction, or we can discuss other issues if that's certain.
Yeah, no, I prefer to stick with the surety reduction. And, um, but I, we're comfortable with what Wesley White recommended.
Um, I, I'm going to tell you, uh, that, that my recognition is that we do not agree with the surety reduction, and reason one is that, um, this is a long project, it's, um, it, it's a dirty site, we've had lots of problems, we've refined a lot. Every time it rains, Karen has to go out there and issue all kinds of citations. The only control that we have over the site is the surety. And I think given the circumstances of the construction site, that I personally am, am not looking to consider a surety reduction. Um, Ian?
I walked the site a week or so ago. And to tell you that I am disappointed in what I saw is an understatement. An absolute understatement. That actually the site is not great. And I would really like to know where the pride is in this operation. The walking trails are a hazard. There are two-by-fours that are, it's a trip factor. It's just, I just don't understand, you've been out of it for three years, you've been fined thirty-two times, thirty-two. And I, I just don't quite understand that. I, for one, cannot give a reduction in surety. It is just painful, the way this is gone, painful.
All right, well, the, I understand your perspective.
Thank you.
I think the site looks significantly different than it's being described, but anyone else's opinion?
Rebecca?
Think we're working hard to get to the end, we have
Rebecca, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I also walked the site, I, I thought, saw a lot of problems with it. I mean, obviously, you guys have done a lot of work to it, but not only the walking trails, but just the, um, the sidewalks, are you got, is that a plan to fix those? Can I just ask that, that every time you go by a driveway, it bumps up?
Yeah, all, all, all the sidewalks will be built and planted, some, some things temporary, all open final push to get everything to exactly what it needs to be. I, I understand, we're, we're in a interim spot, we're in construction, we're trying to wrap up. I, I think the site, I think we've made a lot of great progress.
Well, while you've made progress, uh, we, we can tell you that you've applied for two times, it's almost not acceptable, I mean, really, um, and it's, it's a lot of work, I mean, it's for a moment, it's like morning and midnight, it's like a full-time job. Um, I want to talk to people who went on the sidewalk first, and then we will be prepared.
I guess, to, for me to put a monetary value on what modern money of surety should be returned or not is kind of beyond my pay grade. However, I agree, I guess, with other members of the board that have raised their concerns, um, that surety right now is really some of our only leverage in terms, in terms of ensuring that the project is, is completed to its full potential, and what I can say, um, being involved with the permitting of this since its inception, is that I, I feel like regardless of the your estimates of per se completion or our consulting engineers' estimates of, of completion, I personally feel that there's a long way to go with many of these items, and the vision that I see right now in the field pales in comparison to what I was sold when this project was first brought to us, um, you know, beautiful renderings of the landscape buffer that looks like now it's in ill health and kind of dying, and does not look like what the landscape architect had, uh, produced for, for their imagery. You know, the Belgium blood curving, that is so much more beautiful than linear granite curving, so that we could do that. It really is, is a mess.
Just like teeth.
It's, I'm not sure who's completing.
I'm not going to disagree with you.
I'm not sure who's completing the work, but
It's not my, it's not my favorite.
Yeah, um.
Following the plan.
Yeah, I, yeah, I wouldn't say it's not, it's following the plan, I just don't know what level of workmanship is, uh, is, is, it's being completed, or who's doing the work, but regardless, um, there, there's just, there's a my point is that I feel like the town and this board still desires to have some leverage. I personally can't put a dollar amount on, on that, um, and I guess I would be, tend to be more conservative than what Toll Brothers, as well as our top peer who, uh, engineers come up with. So, I, I guess, just ask that we follow the process we're relying on. Consultants that have expertise, they I don't know what else we could do differently.
Mr. Pritchard, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you have anything to say about this project?
So, uh, yeah, um, well, I, I tend to agree with the comments that have already been made here. I also note that the requested reduction was about, uh, three hundred thousand dollars less than even the consultant estimate. So in my view, we're not close enough to make any reduction in the bond at this point. We don't know what we don't know, we still have a long way to go, and I think it would be prudent on our part just to maintain the status quo.
No, I, I think that, uh, the bond should be reduced, not as much as Toll Brothers is requesting, um, you know, we do have the Wesley Whitton that came up with their figures, um, I'd say we start there and move up, but that should make a reduction at least, you know, in, in some of it, it's a two million dollar bond. We can free up five hundred thousand.
Well, you can tell me
Not two million right now.
And we did the, the math.
Yeah.
Yeah, if this went to, uh, uh, if, if, if Toll Brothers walked away, which they say they're going to stay to finish the project, the remaining work will have to be done under prevailing wage. And I asked the D P W, I said, do you think this amount, what is prevailing wage, how much more does it add to a project? And I'm told it can add two to three times more to a project.
Okay.
And so
That wasn't in the Wesley Whitton analysis now?
No, but that was not in the Wesley Whitton analysis, and so you know, I'm, I just want to give you that information. I don't believe they're going to walk away, but we have had a project in the past that a company did go bankrupt, and we had to, the town had to finish the project, and it all had to be done at prevailing wage. That was, that was probably ten years ago.
We, we haven't walked away from a project until we finish. Every project we have, we're a publicly traded company.
We, we know you're here doing your job, we're doing our job, it is
Yeah, no, I just want to let you know, we haven't walked away from a project until we finish all of them.
Always a first time. Um, so I, I'm going to make a motion now, we do not induce the surety for what Toll Brothers stand, that is, we may spend the way this right now. I'm going to change the struggle.
If we, can we, though, like, set, like a, you know, set a goal for, like, what, what you want it to look like before cover that next time there's, there's surety.
We, we just try to get a book, Mr. Plank, that doesn't work.
No, it's sad, I know it was two, it was two years ago, that's, I mean, we've done a lot of work in two years.
And we are not just giving them, we've done a lot of work, uh, we, we, uh, we are unhappy with the, uh, with the results of the work, is what it is, uh, I, we go out here frequently, I can't tell you, I, I've done several places, it's messed up. I know this goes without, every time it rains, she has to go out there.
I'm aware, I'm aware.
I remember this the other day, and watched the site manager drive all the salt's on, like this, like, no, do not, let's avoid the salt's on. Um, the, the amount of, of, of waste and the amount of, of time, uh, which is not looking at our perfect, but it is our, um, it is our job to protect the town and I believe that uh if we do not keep the surety in place, uh it it's kind of like what drives the project on is that they they have all this money tied up, so they're gonna work harder uh uh faster, but if you could have seen the original drawings, uh it was beautiful and I
Yeah, but is is that kind of money then keep the, you know, keep them from being able to complete the
I know, I know, but I don't think so, they're a publicly traded company, probably got a problem.
Okay, so alright, but in that in that case, oh, you know, it doesn't help them from like from completing it faster, doing it better because they're a publicly traded company, then can we also say, are we then worried about, you know, this town having to take over, they've been launched?
Happening. Because I think we have to, because they are just not, uh they're not reacting to our concerns at all, I mean, we closed them down one time. They they actually refused to listen to us and the only way we got them to do that was to shut them down. And and that's and that's problematic for us uh here, uh like I said, it is overall, it's got the cleanest draft site. And we went to a curving that literally they put those uh what was it called, those grid of curtains?
Bottles.
Bottles, and in the back of it is formal concrete.
That's right, and it's terrible.
That has to come out and
And office to come out.
And it has to come out, it has to be removed.
And I said, they want my teeth.
I'm I'm not a fan of the curb myself, I'm
Yeah.
Well, you know what, and they
Following the plan, I I
I know, and they will not hold up
I I agree with you.
to plowing, they will not hold up the, I mean, there's a mess on the main road where somebody hit that into it and it was just tunnel.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Well, like I said, I I have a feeling that's that's his problem, but I I want to tell you, and and while you can you can have your opinion, Bob, uh I want to take a straw vote as to whether we should not reduce the surety and I'm in favor of not reducing it, Ian?
Yes, we're doing it.
Reducing it, man?
I would say that as I sit here right now, I I would probably be in favor of non-reduction, however, in order to proactive and give the African a chance or not active, but you know, the the developer a chance, I would entertain them to invite us for another site visit at any juncture when they feel like they're proud to show us what we can, you know, what uh what is worthy of this level of of production, I mean, we can have this on an agenda again, because they they can keep requesting reduction, I think right now we're hearing that there's, you know, people are disappointed and unhappy and then maybe show us something that makes us happy and I'm happy to give out more surety, I just, right now, I feel like it's not like a tool in our toolbox.
Yeah.
Now, I just I just wanna make sure the target is moving, because we we here, it's been two years, done a lot of work in two years. A consultant has a particular review, which
You still think, from what I understand, every unit up there is resold.
They they have, we're we're nearing the completion and I will be able to
Yes. And a lot of people
to wrap up final items.
Unfortunately, are living in an construction site and for some of them, especially down by our mine, it's very difficult, I wonder how some of them can in fact get out of their their units with all of the stuff parked in the roads. So, you know, I understand what Bob was saying and then I think that maybe by OMCU at Christmas time.
Yeah, you know, can I say something? Sure, um I think we have to consider the overall schedule that has been provided. The overall schedule that has been provided is if they want to be done with the units by the end of the year. That's the units, that doesn't include some of the major site stuff that you guys saw, you know, the nature trail, the walkways, the the basins, that stuff is not all gonna be done till next year, so I think I think you're kind of fooling yourself if you say that come back at Christmas, because all they're gonna be focusing on between now and Christmas is certificates of occupancy.
Right. Right.
C CMOs and the surety is the only way to get the work done.
Yep.
And CMOs are gonna be that they plan to have all the units sold and occupied by the end of the year and finish the site work next year, when some of it is the applicable time of the year to do the site work.
Thank you. Okay. Great. Steve, how do you feel?
Um I I don't I don't feel any different than I said before, I think as Karen mentioned, there's a long way to go. We probably don't know what we don't know. We certainly would incur significantly more costs, I think, if we actually had to take it on ourselves and public company or not. It it is what it is, and I will say that, you know, given the history um you know, the the history of performance here is not on your side in terms of uh trusting what you're saying. And um you know, you you reap what you sow and I would I would say come back in six months or eight months and talk to us again.
Thank you. Rebecca?
I'm gonna agree with Steve, I'm also gonna say you can use say two years, but in two years, you guys have been building more, you've been developing the property, so it's not like we're at the, you're still building units, I mean, I know you're almost done with building units, but you're still you've been, you know, you went into a whole nother phase, phase B, so there's not even a thought of giving back any cer- surety surety at that point. Um I I would, I I just say I'm maybe six months, I'm thinking six months is a good time to come back.
Thank you. Karen, do you have a date that you'd like to see you come back? So I'm gonna tell you right, based on that straw vote, we are not gonna reduce surety.
No, I'm understood, so I I appreciate your time, so the the submission of it, it's it's based on specific things, it's not based on
No.
some of the things we've talked about, it's specific criteria, you have the, it's all
Then you'll have the warranty come to us and we have the warranty to say, so Karen, what would you like me to do with that?
Well, I I don't anticipate that they should come back before before the end of the planting season next year. I mean, because there's a lot of basin work that has to be done, there's a lot of planting work that has to be done. There's grass work that needs to be done, there's the nature trail that needs to be fixed, the the sidewalks. I just, a lot of that cannot happen in the winter, in their schedule that they provided, but he says spring, summer, two thousand and twenty-three. So I can't ima- I can't entertain, I don't think that they should come back before the end of the summer next year.
Okay, we'll see you like later.
Yeah, no, I understand the thing, we, you know, we submit for specific specific items that are
I we know.
All those things are accounted for, they're part of the remaining downs.
Like I said, the debt is out of our control, so um
Look, I you know, you you had specific items to do from the get-go and the fact that you've had to be five thirty some odd times because you're not conforming with those requirements doesn't give us any warm fuzzy that what you've given us now is any better.
I think we're all set, so we don't do anything.
Alright, we'll push to the summer next year.
To the end of summer next year, thank you very much. Are we all set now?
Yeah, I'm set, thanks.
Moving on, all business, new business, go ahead.
Excuse me, can I just, I I'm sorry, I'm I'm gonna be signing off now.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I just wanted to be in, sorry about that, thanks, guys.
Yeah, Rebecca.
Thank you for joining us, really appreciate it, thank you very much.
Yep, have a good night.
Yep.
Ian, go on to your
Oh, yes, I do, right then, yes. I move to approve the meeting minutes for October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Call in favor, say aye. Ms. Lember, aye, and Ms. Morsey?
Aye.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Thank you unanimously, call in favor.
I will talk for the requisition of five hundred dollars to Robert Proctor for unexpected peer review funds for two thousand six hundred nine dollars and seventy five cents to Wesley Whitman group of peer review at Seaside institution for one hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty cents to Gatehouse Media for legal ad for thirty-three new driveway for a hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty cents to Gatehouse Media for legal ad for sixty-one new driveway for five hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-two cents to Vaness and Associates for peer review of seven new driveway traffic for two thousand twenty-five dollars to Maricopa for peer review of Curtis Estates for one thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars to Maricopa for peer review and six million dollars to Terrace.
That's right.
Call those in favor, Ms. Lember?
Aye.
Ms. Morsey?
Aye.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Thank you unanimously, all in favor.
So now we'll be in talking, you got you have the most liaison.
Uh yeah, I have the most liaison, I'm eleven, far away. Um CPC is meeting again um of eleventh and we, right now, we are twelve items that they are looking, and I've I've given them to everyone, um except for Steve and Rebecca. And some of it, I don't have the prices because I don't, but I know some of them. The pickleball court, number seven, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the pickleball court. Um the wheel of park windows, that's almost half a million dollars, I think. So this money involved here, the first meeting will be November seventh, September fourteenth.
Ian, can you tell me what the phase one of Pier forty-four is? Do you know?
I have no clue.
Okay, I'll just watch it.
They have been talking about raising the building and turning it into a park.
This is the EDC was talking about?
Yes, and maybe Ms. Conley would know. I would, um Karen Conley, uh Berry Rock Tree Lane, um member of the select board, not only liaison to the planning board. Um I would like to say that uh we put a placehold grant for Pier forty-four on the select board liaison to that group. Uh we have uh engaged a a design firm to provide us with preliminary plans, hopefully by the end of the year. We'll have three runnels of what we're talking about, so the people have something to react to. That uh money was funded by M MDTA mitigation funds, the uh so that's phase one. Uh we're looking to CPC to potentially give us funding for phases two and three, which is designing permitting and preparation of construction, construction documents. Uh our our plan will be to go to town meeting in April and hopefully get approval from town meeting for a design and then to to get the uh the bits going and the uh the not construction, up to construction. So much as the library did, we're doing this in phases and letting the town decide each way along the way. But we're at the point now where we've been talking about what to do with that property for many years. We don't need this senior center, we really don't need yet any building to take care of the town, it is not a historic structure. So, you know, I think that the general consensus from a lot of the um the the uh surveys that we've done and talking to people is that some sort of a park is appropriate, but as you all know, it has major constraints in terms of the site. So um we hired a very reputable, good design firm who knows a lot about resiliency, waterfront park, et cetera, et cetera. Um so that's that's the plan, there is no monetary uh value attached to what we're asking CPC for yet. We're hoping to get to the point where we've got three designs for people to react to and then we'll have to figure out, well, are we going for the VW what, are we going for the Cadillac, what are we going for here? Because as you can imagine, the cost for doing something like that could range from a couple of million, way north of that, but you know, it all depends on what the town has in hand to take for and what the site can actually support.
Thank you.
And may I ask, sure, what about um the Cole Parkway gazebo? Has any thought been given to that vis-à-vis Pier forty-four? Yes, the select board has also commissioned a a Cole Parkway uh committee and on the select liaison of that committee, it makes sense to have someone who is keeping an eye on Pier forty-four and I'm not a voting member on at least on Pier forty-four, uh Cole Parkway is a little different, but to to keep an eye on a whole waterfront and all of both Pier forty-four and Cole Parkway have a variety of board members, let's say the waterways, uh historic commission, et cetera, to try to at least come up with some plans for uh Cole Parkway. Uh I don't know if you're aware, but but the uh property next to uh Pier forty-four is actually owned by private-owned estate, the boat brand. And they have plans to do work there as well, so hopefully we can start to think about all of these and how they all work together. Uh in particular, uh we know we we're probably not gonna be able to use the lighthouse, the lantern room, we're probably gonna have to completely reconstruct it. But the question would be, would there be somewhere around Pier forty-four site for that, should we do that? Who knows? Same thing with, yeah, the same, yes, it's that, the same thing with gazebo. I mean, we shouldn't, at this point, I don't think, I think a lot of people agree, spend money on reconstructing the gazebo if we don't know what we're doing with Cole Parkway and if we don't know that we could replace it somehow or other at the Pier forty-four site. So I think we're trying to put all these pieces together, you know, they're all in various stages of thinking. Thank you. So, uh and then also traffic rules, weeds, the first, and these are a bunch of things, um if um more than I would come up with, uh one leg row, stuff like that, who wants to be on first? That's all I know.
Anybody else with liaison? I I do notice, um unfortunately for us, um we were overruled on five words for the way and um the zoning is, they are like way above left field when it comes to uh uh modern resource protection district, uh you know, the their their argument was that uh it can be developed and approved as as a a site in like the sixties. But it's now twenty twenty-two and we have all kinds of new restrictions and they just totally threw it out the way. They just, you know, what they're doing, what I do, so unfortunately, we lost that one. And that's a very real area, it says part of the town and uh we were not successful in blocking match. So that's all.
Does it demand exposure?
Yes.
Well, exactly.
Five words for a wedding, so it's it's
It's a tributary, it's an except that from a tributary.
It's that They won't be for a variance, and in action was interesting, because they told us we got the right black toilet over, um because it's later than this. Um and they're looking for like really, well, this particular zone, they're looking for very strict guidelines. Uh and they were, what they basically are paying now unless that they won't be for areas from a hundred fifty feet to fifty feet. So it 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 got into the weeds and it 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 was a lot of back and forth and and they won, so.
What's their, what was their reasoning for the variance, so is the state
Because it had Because it had been approved and it generally mattered that we had regulations by law, so the state had approved. And they had already disturbed the land, so whatever is, the land had already been disturbed, whatever the three guidelines were under there, the black toilet downstairs, they had already disrupted it in the back, so like we said, different woods give different results, future students, so So Karen, what do you have to tell us?
I would say we remain very busy for getting um some reaccessed grounds. Um we will hopefully have fourteen sixteen Old Country Way for endorsement next time and sure and setting a surety and then uh that property, Rock Proctor sold it to Don Miguel. Um so Don Miguel intends to hopefully commence construction later this month and get the foundation um in before winter. Um so very, very ambitious.
Always.
Um you know, recently, we have a couple of big projects and we just um, you know, uh been told that probably in the next week, we'll be getting the stormwater permit for the uh field, so that'll probably be in December as soon as we So we have a lot of special permits out there, so we need y'all to come to the meetings and
Yeah, I have plenty of seats to talk, so Ian, I I know that I will be at zoning, I I believe I'm district media November first, which has to do with the forty B on Old Olympic Park, uh our district date, I believe.
Has the forty B up on um three A gone so?
Well, it's been no new, no new developments out back, no, no new developments.
But has the the time period last?
No.
It's up there only two years.
I I believe that I I believe that, I don't think two years is gone.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, there's, I don't think the two years is gone. I mean, if if we kind of feel that if they're going to do a project up there, they probably have to submit a new project eligibility application because they can't get the about, the sort of capacity, the subject capacity is available on site. But we don't, we don't know anybody that, we we do know that on the cottages and open bucket, they are, they have a revised plan um, to have twenty-four units versus thirty-four units. But there's been no engineering done to the twenty-four units. So I don't know what the ZBA is going to comment on on November first.
And I think that
And that's up to the ZBA.
Yeah, and and I think that that we still kind of like give a waiting to see, because it's already been continued once because they've worked with us, it just might continue here, so.
Is there a select ones meeting on the first, November first?
I don't think so. It's not on, I don't see it on the calendar.
No, no, but that's the first Tuesday.
Oh, you know, it's it's, we would have had, but it turns out we can't have a meeting on election day.
Oh.
Elections day is the eighth, right?
Right.
But I think that's one we're supposed to have. I, so something happened with the town. But if you look on it, it's not there, so.
Okay. So just to remind the planning board, we have November tenth and November seventeenth and December eighth and December fifteenth. And we have special permits at, uh, who knows?
Right. I'll let, uh, I'll make a motion to the chair. Second.
All those in favor? Ms. Lever?
Aye.
Mr. Morstein.
Hi.
Ms. Burbank, Mr. Perchard got your eye. All in favor. You didn't have this. Thank you.
All right, see you.
Thank you. Enjoying the chat.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for joining us. Appreciate that.